January 8th, we'll start with the pledge. Any changes to the agenda?
Yes, I have a short report on the RSU Finance Committee.
And I'd like to add, maybe under Business, talk about a letter that we've all received concerning the Clearview Estates. Anything else? Seeing none? How about motion? So move. Maybe by Dan.
As amended.
Second by Belma, those in favor?
All right, minutes of the December 11th.
Public forum. Oh yeah, public forum, sorry. Anybody from the public have anything non-agenda related? Anybody from the board? Nope. Calls it on. All right, now let's approve the minutes, December 11th. Make a motion, we approve as submitted. Motion by Dan. Second by Phil. All those in favor? All right, Belma.
Oh, oh, wait a minute. Oh, no, he's got a, the punch cards, I just wanted to make sure that we, yeah, the punch card was June 30th, because it's.
Thank you, Dan, for that. Belma?
All right, on Thursday, December 14th, the RSU Finance Committee met and they received their FY23 audit from Whipley, who does their audits. The audit was an excellent audit, I have a copy of it here to give to Keith and anyone else who would like to see it. They also presented a copy, since they've transferred to Kennebunk Savings Bank, they gave out a copy of the interest that has been earned since they've transferred to Kennebunk Savings Bank. In November, they earned over $33,500. In October, they earned $41,600. In September, they earned almost $34,000. In August, they earned $35,000. And these, these far exceed what they were earning with their other banking relationship. And as a comparison with the other bank, the interest that they earned was about $17,000. So they're more than doubling and sometimes tripling. And we will be starting finance meetings for the new budget next month. And they also gave us a report. Donations. There was an account set up called Friends of RSU 21 and all of the charitable donations went into that account. That account was audited. Everything, they have to keep track of everything that they spend and what they spend it on. And that, that was, a report on that was given to the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Belma. Yep. Can you just come to the microphone, Chip?
Do you all know what the total amount of the charitable contributions was?
Do you have that figure, Belma?
No, the only thing they gave us was what they have, so far, they have spent, they predicted that the cost for the items here, which was the backstop, the ADA Bridge, the hurdles, the wind screens, and Portsmouth Sign Company, and the press box sign needs to be paid and has already been approved. And those figures, the prediction was $50,000 and the actual, the quote or the actual was a little over $56,000. So apparently there are still charitable donations coming in, we didn't get a complete report of the entire account. But I'm sure if you get in touch with the Finance Department at the RSU, they'll be able to get that for you, Chip.
Sure, thank you. Yep, Mr. Manager?
Yes, I believe that Select Board member Dubois wanted to have some information or a discussion relative to the storm that occurred on the 18th, so he asked if both Public Works and Fire could be here as well, so we have them in attendance, so I'll leave it up to Dan to maybe go through what, what he observed, what the calls that he got, so on and so forth.
So first of all, I, I wanted to, to Andy, you know Jim Wheeler? He, Kennebunk Fire Department. Right? Yeah. So he approached me about a month or so ago, and I guess you folks and them got into some training or something together, and he said, "I just want to let you know that the folks that you have in, in the fire department in Rundle, they are some very smart individuals." I was very impressed by what was going on. So, yeah, he, he wasn't there, so. So I just, I wanted to share that, I don't know who was part of that training, but he was, he was pretty impressed, he said, "You, you guys got a real good crew there, so kudos to the team there," so. Yep. So the storm on the 18th, you know, if power goes down, everybody knows, right, you call CMP or you call Kennebunk Light and Power. And you can go on their website and within like a few minutes, you'll see, you know, everybody's call, 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 right? In the case on the Thompson Road, what happened is a line went down and nobody really knew what that line was, except, you know, Terry and whatever, but residents, it was consolidated, it was a phone line. It went down, but there was no loss of phone, and I'm not sure how many people on that line actually have landlines today, but that was down for like days before Consolidated was even contacted. And I'm just wondering if it's something that the town should do when something like that happens, is make a, make a call to Consolidated or make a call to Verizon. If, if a power line goes down, chances are, it's probably gonna lose power, it's not just sagging, I mean, I know that happens, but it's relatively rare that a power line just sags down, right? But in this case, we went, I don't know, two, maybe three days before Consolidated was even contacted. And when they finally went there, they were there, I was told they were there for only 10 minutes, but nothing happens in 10 minutes, but, you know, I was told that they got there, got their truck, boom, and probably something that you could have done, you know, Terry put it. So I'm wondering if, if, if we have a number, if we have something we can call, I know the folks there were calling the, their, the Consolidated number, but they got some pushback, or you're not a, you're not an account holder and blah, 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 and I think Keith, you might have done the same thing.
That is correct.
Yeah. So in the future, I'm, I'm wondering if we can do something, if somebody from the town, you know, make the call and say, "Hey, look, this, you know, this is the town manager, or this Public Works Director, or the Fire Chief, hey, you got a line down." I don't know who, but I think we ought to try to be proactive and, and make a call, because in a case like that, nobody called from residents, nobody would have had a reason to call.
You know, I think the easiest way to so, to, to solve the issue would be to have residents, if they see a line down, to call, to call the dispatch. Because if they call Bitterford Dispatch, I'm sure that they're, they're gonna relay that message to the company, the utility that they have on file. You bring up a good point, because when I tried, all I wanted to know was, "What's my account number?" And they, they, quite frankly, weren't gonna talk to me unless they had an account number, so that's a little disappointing, but I think if we make it an emergency.
Well, so if dispatch being.
Bitterford.
Huh?
Oh, contact Bitterford Dispatch.
So would, would they know what number to call?
I would, Andy may know.
So just so you're aware, the York County EMA, EOC got activated, all right? So anytime we had a line down or anything like that, either CMP, Consolidated, Spectrum, that all went through our dispatch, we would report it to our dispatch, report the nearest telephone line that it came off from, so J2 or whatever. And then dispatch would relay that information to York County EMA, EOC, and they would prioritize who got fixed first, you know? We all know that the hospital line's gonna stay intact, school's gonna try to, they're gonna try to get the schools up and running, et cetera, et cetera. So with that, whether or not the EOC contacted Consolidated or Spectrum, I don't know. I can find out for you, the easiest thing, and I've done it numerous times before, is cut the line. We can cut the line, just understand that you're gonna be without cable, you're gonna be without internet, you're gonna be without telephone.
Right, but if, if you cut the line.
Get the road open.
Are we now liable for the repair of that line, whereas, you know, it wasn't, and if there's an emergency, I can get that, but if there's not an emergency.
We've cut the, I've cut plenty of lines. Bitterford Fire has never received a bill, Rundle Fire has never received a bill.
Yeah, but that just puts people out of hell a lot longer.
Well.
And so the, and the folks that contacted me, when they called Consolidated, and this was, I think it was two or three days later, they didn't even know about it, but at least that's what the representative on the line was saying, they didn't even know about it.
Possible deniability.
What's that?
Possible deniability.
That, to speak to that, though, that wasn't just a Consolidated call, that, that took a telephone pole and power lines with it. We were, the Consolidated holdup was maybe 24 hours.
No, initially. Longer than that.
Well, there, there was a pull down, power lines.
Tree.
There, there was a lot to it, right?
Yeah, I get that.
And, and again, they called and CMP had extra people in here, they had people from Ohio, people to pull down from Canada. Anyway, I mean, this is no different than the storm that we had last year, right around the same time, 400,000 customers. You know, Thompson Road unfortunately is not a super priority for me, right?
So. My, my only concern is that.
Many should be.
Somebody contacting them, right? When the, when the power was, when the power line went back up, when that road was all cleared, it was at least two days after that road was cleared before they came down and put that fixed line.
CMP did the same thing down in my area, they just put up their line.
Yeah.
And that was it, they didn't care about cable, they don't care about telephone, they cared about the power line.
No, and, and I, I want to give kudos to Terry and his crew for, for everything that they did, because I'm sure that wasn't the only place, he was all over town doing stuff, and, you know, they did a good job in getting that done right off the bat, but I'm just, you know, trying to take a proactive step rather than rely on, you know, EMA, whoever that was. So, I don't know, I just, I want to bring it up, I mean, it's, it's a once in a lifetime, I wouldn't say once in a lifetime, but with these storms getting stronger and stronger, stuff like this is gonna happen more often, right? And I just, what can we do to be a little bit proactive?
I just, I don't want the town to get in the habit of cutting lines, I don't, I don't think it should. It's more of an inconvenience, I'm sorry that you had to go to the tree, turn around and go back around, but really, what did it add? A minute and a half to your commute?
Yeah, I, I, you know, there were people all up in arms and I'm like, it's just a small inconvenience, you get your power, you got.
Right.
You know, but still, I think we can be a little proactive.
We only had five storm-related calls for us, either trees down, power lines down, for that Bitterford Dispatch toned us out. Broke the road, Thompson Road, Old Alfred, New, and Thompson, 346 and 355, I think those are the same calls, it's just two, two different people reporting them, that's it. Old Alfred was down for, that was blocked for a little while, that was almost as long as Thompson, if not longer. Yeah, 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 yeah. So this, this was just.
I mean, the Old Alfred Road, that was just, was that just power, was that?
That was, yeah.
Cable, cable and phone? I know that tree was down. I know.
I could have picked that up, but then attached that. But it's just too much of a liability.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think you should be touching it.
We should be touching it.
Right, I agree.
CMP will not touch, you know, Spectrum or Consolidated's lines, you know, because it's a liability.
It works both ways, right, I mean, they're not, yeah, I get that, and I certainly wouldn't want you to be on.
Consolidated has its own problems. Right now, I did a quick survey, I got the copy if anybody wants. There was 48 holes in the town of Rundle right now, waiting for Consolidated to take their stuff off so they can take the holes there. And that's just, like I said, and the most of them being on Limerick Road, I think 17. And that's not count Route 1, 111, all locked up. So without saying, you're probably looking at somewhere between, I said, there's 48, I know there's 10, you're probably looking at 60 to 70 holes in town. And that's not counting new holes, right now the CMP is set, that's waiting for CMP to change their lines over.
So that one on the, on Brimstone, the corner of Brimstone and Limerick Road, are we waiting Consolidated or are we waiting Spectrum? That's been three years.
I got all numbers and everything. It's 48.
I think the other thing that comes up with this discussion is, what we've, what would we have done if this was a Sunday snowstorm? And that lines across the road? Now what are we gonna do? Are we, are we know that the line's there, are we gonna continue not to plow that road because the line's down?
Yeah, well, I think if you don't plow that road, now that becomes an emergency situation, so at that point.
There's been times where, where that line's across the road, where I've had to turn around and go back the other way, and it's the other side.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it was January 28th last year, 2023, where we got hammered with a snowstorm, and we didn't stop, like, we had to shut down Campground Road all night, 9:00 didn't even have enough people. We just put up barricades and left, because we ended up doing, uh, I think it was 18 calls that night? All hanging wires, it was when we had that heavy wet snow that just literally decimated the areas.
Well, again, I mean, I don't know if we'd have said something Consolidated right off the bat, if it had got fixed any quicker, I have no idea, right? But.
See, other than York County, nobody has any other, you know, magical number that they can call to get these guys. Years ago, when I was in fight about it, we had an emergency number to see if they, and that would have been less.
Yes. Especially when the EOC's activated, they take that rate from dispatch, everything goes through the EOC. Then they prioritize everything.
I have no idea. I don't know, I still think, I still think we ought to try to be proactive and somebody make a call, but it's just me.
I mean, you're gonna get the same person.
I get it, but in this case, and who knows if this would have been a day or two earlier, and, and like you said, it was just, it was just a minor inconvenience, but if a call had been made sooner, maybe it would have got fixed sooner, no idea.
When I talked to, because I just had a hole down on, said, I talked to Kennebunk Light and Power. Basically, because I told them, I asked them if they had any numbers where I could call Spectrum and Consolidated to get their lines moved any quicker, he says, "Don't worry, buddy," he says, "Because you're not gonna get through." He says, but he goes, "When we change our lines over, we send paperwork to Spectrum and Consolidated, which starts a workload, generates a workload for them to do." And then it's all in their hands.
I know you're not satisfied, but.
Well, I mean, the other thing is too, maybe we could be a little bit more active to, to a point on the town's Facebook about just making people aware that, that, that line's down, we know about it. Calls have been made is to the best of our ability, and.
Yeah, I think the only thing we probably could have done better, and you know, is put the, the sign that you put up where the road was closed, if we'd have done that, because people were coming across and they'd turn around and get all pissed off.
But I expected that those lines to go back up.
Yeah. Yeah.
That put the sign that say the road closed, that, that closed a while.
Yep, I mean, it was like on, on the Rundle chatter site, it, it was on that Facebook page for, yeah, right off the bat, pretty early.
You called me, I was up there with no signs up that long.
That's funny. Yeah, I said, "Terry, can we just put something at the beginning of the road that says," and he's like, "I'm out here right now." I looked out my window and you had already gone, but.
Well, I think what we can do is try to make an effort to see if we can get a firm telephone number from Consolidated. Whether it's going to be viable from that day forward, nobody will know, but I think Terry brings up a good point, we've got all these poles. We may want to put together some sort of a letter from the Select Board to say, "Hey, look, what are you guys doing here?"
Yeah.
"In order to get this done." "We've recognized this, we've had power outages, we've had your lines across roads, can't get ahold of you, don't have good numbers." I think there's a plethora of things that we may be able to at least apply a little bit of pressure and see if that helps.
Might be something that, you know, you really don't want to do it, but get the DUCMO and say, "Hey, you know, enough of that, you know, something's gonna be done."
Well, I think that's a start, Keith, and, and all. But thanks, you guys did a great job for what you had to do, that's for sure, I know you were pretty busy.
Like I said, I built ramps so I could get over those lines, destroy them, so I could get that tree out.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure how long those lines have been there.
And again, it was, it was just a minor inconvenience, but still, people today are just.
Phones, barricades out, people go out, they remove the barricades, put the cones.
Yeah, cars, so I had gone down one time just to check it out, somebody went around me, went by, went underneath the line and kept going.
I pulled up one that afternoon, it was a van that went through, hauling a dog truck. And because the way it came down, there was a bunch of room between the inside of that corner of that line, because it was off the ground. Well, it bounced, once the van rolled right back up, it ran over the red tires, back up again, I said, "It's gonna get hooked on that thing." I don't know how it didn't.
All right.
In a black pickup truck.
Nope. Thank you, guys.
Andy, stay put, please.
Yeah, we had, there were, there were some issues related to the septic system at the fire station. There was an initial thought that there, there may have been a failure of the, of the system based on its design and what it was initially set to do, but upon further investigation, it appears that the, the holding tank and the septic system itself is working fine. The issue we had was in a cleanout, I, I guess you would call it, it, it's an area that collects debris from the, from the engine, from the apparatus bays that gets washed down the sewer and then goes into a like a, yeah, yeah, it's a, and that needed to be cleaned, it needed to have all the sand that was in there removed, and the line that was going to the, the system had to be cleaned as well, so we believe that was the issue. We believe that right now that the system is working properly. I talked to both, I talked to the code officer to, when we looked at the design of the, of the initial septic system that's there, and it certainly was designed. Yep. Certainly, the, the, the system seems to be designed, it's designed for 215 gallons per day, so it may fit our needs moving forward at this particular point. The other issue I had is if we had to replace it, could we replace it in the same location? The answer to that was, yes, we could. So I think I'm just trying to, I was worried that it was gonna, that it was failing because of the influx of going from a call volunteer department to a full-time, well, semi-full-time department where we had personnel living there, preparing meals, taking showers, doing laundry, all those kinds of things, we're having a negative impact on it, and it appears that that isn't the case.
So, I got a question.
Yep.
So, I guess that was gonna be my question on, you know, we've talked about maybe expanding that, is the septic system sufficient for extra personnel that if we go in there, or will we have to expand that septic system?
Interesting question, I'm not a, I'm not a septic designer, so I couldn't tell you, I know it's designed for 215 gallons per, per day, so I'm not, I'm not sure how that would relate moving forward with a, with a larger, a larger contingent of people living there full-time, so that was.
Forty years old, well, when was that? 19?
Was it put in in 98, when the building was built?
It's 98, yeah, so probably ought to plan on replacing that system.
So, so when we do some sort of design and redesign of the building, perhaps the system as well? That's all, that's all I had, I was a little worried about it, and that's why I initially put it on there, so. The, the next thing I have is the beginning the establishment of advertising for a building committee relative to the fire station upgrades. I was hoping that Andy would stay, but Andy and I have spoken at great, great length as to what initially needs to be accomplished at the, at the existing building in order to accommodate the personnel we have. We believe that we, the apparatus bay, based on the reduction of, of fire equipment moving forward, particularly the big fire equipment, is large enough to sustain what we presently have. We'd be looking for new office space, sleeping quarters, training facilities, things to that nature, which we're anticipating right now about 2,500 square feet of additional space, so we, the reason I bring it up is that we've sort of done an initial design, and I wanted to try to get some of the initial legwork done in a, in perhaps a goal moving forward with a committee that this is what we're looking at, we're gonna need some help in, in finally figuring out if it's, in fact, the right way to go. But I didn't know if you folks were ready to advertise for that and begin the process. I haven't, I, I think I've shared with you an ad before, and we've gone just one step forward, further, we've done some quick, quick drawings. I've, I've reached out to Steve Dezzel, even though he doesn't live in town anymore. He's willing to assist in any preliminary design. Um, he's willing to uh, assist in any preliminary design work if in fact we want to do that. Uh, now that he doesn't live in town, it'd be a small fee involved. Uh, so I'm negotiating fees at this point with him, but.
He was a big help. He was a real big help.
I think it helped initially. To get things going, so. Yeah, if I hear any, if I don't hear any strong exceptions, I'm I'm gonna move forward and try to establish a committee that we can. Begin to get together and and start uh, plugging away at this.
Boogey, boogie.
All right, perfect. Let's move on to business. So we've got. Oh, I'm sorry, yep.
Excuse. Can you come up and.
Come on up and state your name, please.
Thank you, Dan. Through the chair.
Uh, Patrick Steiner, um, live over in Clearview. Um, I'm sorry, I'm going through the agenda. I missed the uh, public forum.
Yeah.
Is it possible to come back to that for one moment?
Yeah, why don't we uh, let's get through business and before we go into executive session, we'll hit that.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Who was he asking about?
Uh, he lives in Clearview State.
Oh.
So. We'll do your discussion and then tie him into.
Let the select board is part of that.
Yeah, we added that in business, so.
Yep.
Um, so we've got a. An application for Board of Appeals. Is that what it is?
Uh, we have, no, we have. We're try we're attempting to establish a Board of Assessment Review. I've provided to you. Uh, two individuals that have already gotten back to me, providing me their application. Excuse me. Uh, the Board of Assessment Review, if you're not familiar with it. Obviously meets on a very limited basis. I think the last time they met here in town was twenty fourteen. Um, and what they uh, essentially do is review. Um, uh, appeals of abatements that have been filed with the assessor. And not approved. So in other words, if if somebody comes in and files an abatement and the assessor says, no, and you know, I'm sticking with it, they have the ability to. Uh, to request a hearing before the Board of Assessment Review, so. Um, I'm looking to try to gather five people. Right now, it looks like I may have three, but I have two before you tonight. Um, and I've provided your um, information for them. Uh, we have A- Amy McNally, who has indicated that she's willing to serve and I've provided your. Her quick um, application. As well as uh, Sean Donnelly has reached out to me and indicated that. Uh, he's uh, willing to serve as well, so. Uh, what I'd like to do is um, get a vote. Uh, to approve uh, those two folks to serve on the Board of Assessment Review.
Sounds good. I get a motion? You want to do them separately or can we do them together?
Uh, you can do them together if you'd like.
Did you make a motion, Velma?
I make a motion. We approve both. Amy McNally and Sean Donnelly for the Board of Assessment Review.
Motion by Velma, second by Tom. Any more discussion on these two individuals? If not, all those in favor? And then we've got a planning board appointment.
Uh, yes, my um. Next thing I. I had several people that indicated an interest in serving on the. Uh, planning board and I I'm bringing forward the name of. Zachary Shapiro to serve on the planning board. Uh, he would take up or take the place of Susan Sinon, who's who has resigned. I believe I've provided to you. Uh, Zach's uh, background information. Um. And I would li- I'd make a recommendation that we approve him to serve on the planning board.
Or a motion for Zach. Now, make a motion. We approve Zach Shapiro for the. Open planning board position. Motion by Dan. And that is for when's that? When due? How long?
Uh, June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. Do we have a second to that?
We do not. You have a second yet.
Second.
Second by Velma. Uh, all those in favor for Zach? Susan Senate. All right, we've got a certificate of settlement from the tax collector.
Yes, we um, basically two, two things here, both the the settlement of the tax collector as well as the assignment. Or appointment of a new tax collector for, you know. In this, in my view, for an interim basis, but. Um. I have um. Uh, settlement agreement by the tax collector for personal property tax. As well as for um. Uh, real estate taxes and all the other taxes that we. We have, so um. The first one would be the personal property taxes, which is which uh, equates to seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars and thirteen cents. I have the. I'll send the sheets down if you. Releaser of that, um. Then it would be my recommendation to appoint me as a tax collector. Um, for an interim basis until I'm able to hire a new tax collector, customer service rep.
Need a motion for both?
I I think so, yes.
All right, let's do the first one first, the certificate of settlement. So can you repeat the amount, please? Seven thousand?
It's on personal property and it's seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars and thirteen cents.
Motion by Dan. Second by Phil. All those in favor?
And the next would be to a certificate to recommit those personal property to to me. And we'd have this document that you need to sign as well.
So a motion to recommit.
I'll make that a motion.
By Velma. Second by Tom. All those in favor?
The next is the um, real estate taxes uh, in the amount of. Um, four million, four hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars and twenty-four cents. And the same theory would go. Um, releaser of that as well as appoint me as. Tax collector for the collection.
Have those figures been double-checked?
Yes.
Then I make a motion again that we. We uh. Certify the settlement from the tax collector for the real estate taxes. And appoint Keith as interim tax collector.
Motion by Velma. Second by Dan. All those in favor? Were you able to hear that, Tom?
On that note, Keith, have you advertised yet at all for that position?
It will be going out tomorrow.
I need a motion for payable and payroll.
Some move.
I got motion by Velma, second by Dan. All those in favor? Sign away. So Dan has a letter. I don't you missed that probably as well, but we added a letter from from a resident from Clearview?
Yeah, from Stella McCormick.
So he'll read that and then the table's yours.
Yep. So I'm not gonna go and read the whole letter. I mean, we've all gotten it and she asks a bunch of questions. It was sent to us on December sixteenth. And I'm just kind of. Curious as how we go about, so who's to answer those questions or? You didn't get it? Yeah, but uh. Did anybody else not get it?
I didn't get it.
Really? We're on here.
Seeing a letter. What was the what was her name?
Stella McCormick.
Oh, I did. Yes, I saw that and I shared it with the planner.
Right. There was, she asked a whole bunch of questions about warranty deeds. Um, whole bunch of stuff that's going on with with that Clearview estate um, issue. I just wanted to make sure that somebody's looking at that and somebody's answering those questions. I don't know if we should do that or not, but.
I don't believe it's our place to be answering those questions.
I just don't want it to go unanswered. Why she sent it to all of us, so.
Right, I I believe they have a scheduled public hearing on the sixteenth. Of this month, so. Obviously, they can ask those questions to the planning board if if in fact they want to. I know that during the public, that public hearing, um. Our attorney will be here as well, so try to um, answer any and all questions that may come forward.
I didn't get it either, so. I just just checked, so.
It went to all of us.
Want to come up and reintroduce yourself, please, and?
Hi, uh, Patrick Steiner. I live in seventy-six Clearview. And I would like to share my concern uh, about the proposed development going in. Uh, this is the same development that uh, that email Stella was.
Sure, can do. Thank you, man.
Uh, that the email is related to. Um. So the. There are a number of things that are raising concern with this. So the first is the the deed needs to be changed in order for him to do this, uh, put this in, so it is. He's looking to have a public road go through his front yard. Um, there is a old right-of-way that uh. Is in there, but it's clear it's not intended to turn it into a public road. Um. It's issue number one. Issue number two is the well, so they're looking to put in. Five large homes on a golf course and then a ten-unit condo complex. I have lived in this neighborhood for five years. Since I have lived there, I've had my well dug twice. Currently, uh, hopefully this last dig is going to be okay and I am at, I'm over seven hundred feet deep. Everybody in my neighborhood has had a similar story with multiple wells dug. So the well issue is a huge issue. Um, we're very concerned about running out of water. Um, and doesn't seem to be any type of backup plan for that. Next issue, right along with the wells is the sewage, so this is all going to be leach fields. Um, there's not a lot of space these are going into. Um, bad wells with leach, which a small area for leach fields raises another concern right there. Uh, the next is the uh, the stormwater. So since I've lived there, I've seen the water go over the road twice. And now we're looking to put in a big development. Um. Again, another very significant red flag. Of where's this water gonna go? Um, we we've been hearing, hey, you know, we've got, it's a hundred-year storm. Well, hundred years seems to be. Every other year, the way we're going right now. The the last issue um, of concern is gonna be the traffic, so. While we understand we want to put in a development, um, this development isn't going in at the beginning of Clearview. It's not going in at the middle of Clearview. It's going in at the very end of Clearview. So every single resident in Clearview Estates is gonna be impacted by this. This traffic will be driving by every single home. I have two children, um, one in middle school, one in grade school. Um, so we very much enjoy the neighborhood, the way the deeds laid it out to be. The neighborhood demographics are changing. There are a lot more kids that are younger than mine that currently live in the neighborhood. Increasing this traffic is going to certainly create. Some hazards there that don't exist today. And for everyone that has moved there, this is not what we had intended. And is not a danger that we had anticipated dealing with. So those are my concerns and I thank you very much for accommodating.
Thanks. Does anybody have any comments for him before he leaves? Questions?
Right, yeah.
Yep. Thank you. That's the stage he's at currently is public hearing for his.
Yep. Right, they have a public hearing set for the sixteenth. Yep.
And the town attorney will be there?
Anything else before we close the meeting to go into executive session?
Yeah, just real quick, Keith. Uh, last meeting, we talked about uh, punch cards uh, being at the end of June. Have you made that comment? Known to Casella?
We I've relayed that message to them. We haven't had any discussions on it yet. I know what the board voted, so. They were looking at April. You guys are looking to the end of the fiscal year, so we've got a few months that we've got to figure it out.
All right. Anything else from the public? We're gonna close this meeting. I need a motion to go into executive session.
Any emotion that I make a motion, we go to executive session, M R S four oh five six A. Discussion with the town manager related to employees of the town.
That looks like uh, seven forty-seven.
Who seconded that?
Nobody yet.
Nobody yet.
Velma did. Uh, all those in favor? All right. Meeting closed. We'll go into executive session. Thank you all for coming.